Evening, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees order on Tuesday, September 17, 2024, at 6:30 PM. I'll call the roll, Ash Roll.
Here.
Trustee Engelman has an excuse the absence. Sweattick is here. I'd like to ask everyone to stand and join in on his bike. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll open, uh, move to approve the minutes for September 3, 2024, regular trustee meeting.
Second.
Discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the September 10, 2024, special trustee meeting with an amendment to indicate there was no decision at the adjournment of the executive session.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the September 13, 2024, special trustee meeting with an amendment to indicate there was no decision at the adjournment of the executive session?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the September 16, 2024, special trustee meeting?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Acting chief, you've got somewhere to be tonight, so I'm giving you honors.
All right, thank you. Uh, so my first request is to move firefighter Joey Ziwik from EMT to paramedic pay at a rate of $19 per hour.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Joey just passed his paramedic last week, so he's now fully qualified.
Congratulations.
Uh, next request is to move Andrew Hudak into the OIC position at a rate of $19.37 per hour.
Uh, so moved. That was the one that we didn't really need to do. I'm a motion, I'm a, that's okay.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next one, accept the resignation of firefighter Sam Rose, effective September 25th, 2024. He recently accepted a job in Virginia working for the Department of Defense.
It's exciting for him. So moved.
Second.
And final thing I have.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Aye.
And final thing I have is accepting the resignation of firefighter Bianca Inman, effective October 1st, 2024. She took a full-time position at the Bedford Fire Department.
Sorry to see her go.
No, it's, it's a tough one.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
That's it, that's all I have.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Unless anybody else has anything for me.
Thanks, stay away.
Uh, try. We'll see how the city treats me tonight.
And service.
Hello, everybody doing today?
Good.
Uh, first one on my list is to, um, motion to hire Trimore Corporation at a cost not to exceed $12,000 for the Brookshire Robo Concrete Pad Replacement Project. Um, this is just some pads that we pretty much did all the tear out and all the prep work. This is just a Forman poor quote, um, from Trimore. Uh, Fabrizi came in at like $14, $14, $14.85, and Trimore was at $11.25. Um, you know, we've had good luck with Trimore in the past doing this, so I'm a key. We did this last year and, uh, just looking to move forward and get these pads.
This is where we visited with Angie a couple of weeks ago. Who's that? Uh, where were we going up there? Were the pavements, uh, were above?
Oh, yeah, it was the South Side Street. Yeah, you came up there with me and Kenny.
Yeah, okay.
That area.
Okay. Oh, okay, I remember. And we're not changing anything with what we saw when we were out there, right?
Yeah, we have five pads where they were all busted out and all the sub bases out, so.
Right, so moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then I'll just need a signed copy of that one to send back to Trimore for the scheduling. Um, second on the list is request appropriations to purchase a conversion kit through Southeastern Equipment at a cost not to exceed 1,500. Um, this is also a kit for the mower that the salesman did not, uh, throw in there originally. So when we pulled the mower or the motor apart Monday, you know, the boys had to run it back down and they have to get actually special machine parts since it's all custom. So this is the last little piece of the puzzle for the mower to get it back up and running, probably be a week on parts because they're coming out of Texas from Alamo, so.
And then how soon before we're back on the road?
The day it's fixed.
All right, so moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's pretty much it for me tonight.
All right, very good. Last, acting chief. I'll wait till he comes back. Uh, nothing for zoning, cemetery, best days. That's the Ash Roll.
Okay, so I had, uh, the single hauler trash bid update, but there's nothing to update because we still do not have that back from the prosecutor's office to send that out. But that does lead me into, um, another thing that I wanted to discuss, um, to just bring up for open discussion since we are not sending out the opt-out letters, um, this year, which we've been doing for the last three years. I thought, um, maybe take some of those funds that have been used in the past for that and, um, kind of create something new that we can send out, and that is being type, like a newsletter type of thing. Um, I've had a lot of people come up to me in the last three years saying, you know, they think it would be a good idea if the township sent something out once a year or twice a year. I think twice a year might be a little expensive to do something like that, but Sharon Township does something very similar, um, like this, that someone gave me last year. And I was just thinking, would you be open to discussing the possibility of doing something like this, since we are no longer doing opt-outs?
I would, I'd like to see the cost on it, too, if we can. If we can do anything as glitzy as this.
I don't think it will be as glitzy or as big. I actually did reach out to Angel Printing just to get an idea, um, and to do, um, just a single, um, eight and a half by 11 folded, 3,400. The price on that would be, uh, $1,200. That is not including, um, the cost of mailing it at a bulk rate. That is just for, um, the printing of it and then them folding it, and then they would have to put like these little tabs on it to make sure it's sealed. So we'd be looking at about $1,200 for something like that. So it's just a way to let people know what's going on in the township. So wondering if you would be open to discussing that further?
I would. I think we should, uh, wait until Cindy comes back to.
Okay.
All right.
Um, wanted to just put on your radar, um, when we're thinking about interviewing for the fire chiefs. I know, um, we've reached out to a couple of different chiefs in the area about, um, kind of sitting on a board with us to interview for that. We've already received a lot of, um, great applications, um, and resumes from people all around the area. So wondering your thoughts on that, like maybe looking into early October?
Sooner the better. I'd like to.
Okay.
Get that squared away.
Um, if we can make that work with everybody's schedule, would you be open to, like, last week of September?
Probably. And again, we, uh, we should check with Cindy.
Yeah, I'll have, well, I can have Suzanne check everybody's availability, and I can reach out to, um, the chiefs that we've already spoken to. So looking at late September, early October? And then I wanted to talk about the Columbia Gas Donation. Um, Cindy had given us a letter from the Bicentennial Committee. Um, did you have a question?
If you want to take it.
Okay.
Uh, can you give us a little more information on that newsletter? Is it connected to trash or is it a general newsletter?
Just a general newsletter.
Just a general.
Yeah, kind of. And I mean, we would discuss this, we'd probably work on it, um, I would think in a work session of the topics that we want to have in there and what would be written into it. But I'm kind of thinking, I'm envisioning something kind of like the state of the township type of thing, just to let people know, um, what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
And what to look forward to.
Sorry for interrupting you. I just wanted to know.
Yeah.
Now, I'm liking here they have all the departments, the resources in the town and things like that.
Okay. Um, and for the Columbia Gas Donation, um, Cindy had sent us that letter from the Bicentennial Committee that they were asking to be considered for that $5,000 donation as well. Um, I did speak with the Boy Scouts, um, and I did let them know that we had not agreed to give them the money. I just asked if they would be willing to take a donation of that size, which shockingly, they were okay with it. So, um, wanted to talk to you about your thoughts of maybe, um, splitting that $5,000 donation?
I, I did, I saw the letter from, uh, the Stor- Historical Society. They're putting a lot of time and effort and money from other donors into that as well. And I think it was a reasonable request. I'd, I'd like to do it and give them the portion they asked for.
Okay.
I'd be okay with that.
Okay. Okay. And then I, that was all I had on my agenda. The other thing that, um, I just wanted to state for the public is recently, there's been a lot of chatter and confusion on social media regarding executive session and virtual meetings, and I would like to address it and correct it for the public. Executive session allows for the trustees to discuss sensitive issues privately. Personnel issues are an example of this. Executive session does not need to be at the same location every time. We only need a private space where we can close the door to discuss the issues at hand. If, for instance, we hold executive session at the police department, we have every right by Ohio Revised Code to do so. This could be for a multitude of reasons. Gathering additional informations and facts for the issues that we will deliberate on is an example. When the board adjourns from executive session, we can vote on a decision if there is one. Many times, we are not ready for this step because we need to check with the prosecutor's office. Virtual meetings are not mandatory by Ohio Revised Code. It is an option that we provide in Hinkley Township to increase transparency, to allow others to view meetings when their schedule allows for it. The reason we created a YouTube channel was to make these meetings easier to find and follow. There's also some confusion regarding virtual meetings. Please understand that it is not the same as being present in a meeting room. With the expiration of provision of House Bill 151, the rules on engagement in virtual meetings reverted back. This means it is no different watching a virtual meeting live or watching it three days later. You cannot participate. There were some false allegations being made on social media that the trustees were cherry picking who has entered into our virtual meeting on Tuesday. This is absolutely false. As I'm doing it right now, still letting people in. The only way to admit anyone into our virtual meetings is through our iPad, and anyone sitting in the audience on Tuesday could plainly see that the iPad was left on the conference room table when we adjourned to the police station. To imply we kept people from entering a meeting is a reckless and deceptive claim. However, in an abundance of caution, we have now changed the password to our Zoom and lock codes. For those who were in the virtual waiting room for 45 minutes or longer, this is because you were logged in after we adjourned to executive session. Anyone who logged in prior to executive session was admitted. Those that arrived after the initial five minutes of the meeting were admitted as soon as we came back. While we have created a new Facebook page for the township, this is for informational purposes only. It is not an interactive page. If you have questions, concerns, or comments, please email the trustees or attend a meeting in person. I hope that this clears up the confusion that surrounded Tuesday's special meeting. That's all I have to say on that.
Good. Anything else?
That is all I have.
Right, um, the ODOT project for the new signals, uh, you know, light post out here at the center of town is moving forward. And with that, I will move for a resolution to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation project, PID 109059, project name D Delta 03 TSG FY 2025B. Following resolution enacted by Hinkley Township of Medina County, Ohio, herein after referred to as the township in the matter of stated described project, section one, project description, whereas the state has identified the need for the described project, replacing the traffic signals at four intersections, including the traffic signal at the intersection of SR3, SR94, and SR303, including installation, including installing intersection lighting, curb ramps, pedestrian signals, and crosswalks. Now therefore be it ordained by Hinkley Township of Medina County, Ohio, section two consent statement, being in the public interest, the township gives consent, the director of transportation, to complete the above described project. Section three cooperation statement, the township shall cooperate with the director of transportation for the portion of this project within the township limits as follows. Number one, ODOT agrees to assume and bear 100% of the preliminary engineering cost and environmental studies cost. Two, ODOT agrees to assume and bear 100% of the traffic signal and curb ramp construction and construction earring costs with the following exceptions. Number three, the township agrees to assume and bear 100% of the construction cost for using aesthetic light poles, bracket arms, and luminaries on the project, the above cost to install standard, above the cost to install standard light poles. And number four, a preliminary cost estimate for the township share of this project is $5,000 for construction cost. Section three cooperation, cooperation statement, the township agrees that if federal funds are used to pay the cost of any consultant contract, the township shall comply with 23 CFR 172 in the selection of its consultant and the administration of the consultant contract. Further, the township agrees to incorporate ODOT's specifications for consulting services as a contract document in all of its consultant contracts. The township agrees to require as a scope of services clause that all plans prepared by the consultant must conform to ODOT's current design standards, and that the consultant shall be responsible for ongoing consultant involvement during the construction phase of the project. The township agrees to include a completion schedule acceptable to ODOT and to assist ODOT in rating the consultant's performance through ODOT's consultant evaluation system. Section four, maintenance, upon completion of the described project, and unless otherwise agreed, the township shall be, one, be responsible for the cost to replace any aesthetic light poles, bracket arms, and luminaries on the project above the cost to replace standard light poles, and two, to provide ample financial provisions as necessary for the maintenance of the described project. Section five, utilities and right-of-way statement of the township owned, if township-owned utilities within a corporation limit or in a private easement outside of corporation limits need to be relocated due to this ODOT project, the township will be reimbursed for any relocation work. ODOT will perform the coordination, relocation, and reimbursement, which shall comply with the current provisions of 23 CFR 645 in the ODOT Utilities Manual. If other public utility, if other public and private utilities need to be relocated due to this ODOT project, they will not be reimbursed for relocation, with exceptions due to an easement, et cetera, that will be coordinated and obtained by ODOT. Section six, authority to sign, the township hereby authorizes Jack Sweattick of said Hinkley Township to enter into and execute contracts with the director of transportation, which are necessary to develop plans for and to complete the above described project and to execute contracts with ODOT pre-qualified consultants for the preliminary engineering phase of the project. Upon request of ODOT, Jack Sweattick is also empowered to execute any appropriate documents to effect the assignment of all rights, title, and interest of the township to ODOT arising from any agreement with its consultants in order to allow ODOT to direct additional corrective work, recover damages due to errors or omissions, and to exercise all other contractual rights and remedies afforded by law or equity.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, Ash Roll?
Yes.
Sweattick, yes. Thank you for that.
Been a long time coming.
The, uh, the last thing in my head, uh, we had a resident contact township talking about additional sinus at Bellison State, uh, for traffic, uh, additional traffic signage, traffic control. Um, chief's under advice, that's under the purview of the county, and, uh, offered to contact the county to see if they can do anything about it, give it consideration, and I'd like to recommend to the chief that we allow him to do that.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Yeah, nothing else for this evening.
Did we want to excuse Mike? Was Mike sticking around for?
You wanted to hear that, didn't you? Have a good night. Now raise your hand. All right.
Be polite.
Okay.
Have a good night, Mike.
You too. We will move to pay the bills, the amount of $74,567.16.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public questions, comments?
Melissa Augustine, um, former trustee. I wanted to read these two letters into the record, and I did not bring copies for you because you already have them. They are public documents. Chief Grossenbaugh, Assistant Chief Barrett, and Hinkley Township trustees, I am writing to formally tender my resignation from my position as lieutenant with Hinkley Fire Department effective September 30th, 2024. I am willing to remain through September in limited capacity in order to effect a proper transition to my replacement with the various state boards and companies I am responsible for. The recent actions towards Chief Grossenbaugh, which have led to his resignation and the unprofessional verbal interaction of trustee Jack Sweattick with senior leadership of the department, has deeply affected my confidence in the township leadership. To name a number of my growing list of concerns, the board of trustees, especially trustee Jack Sweattick, speaking with other townships about providing EMS coverage, effectively looking to disband Hinkley Fire, consistently undermining the chief's work to hire the full-time firefighters, meddling in department operations, questioning fire ground operations with no knowledge of firefighting or the difficulties of fire ground operations, and acting as the fire department liaison while trustee Ash Roll holds this particular position. Chief Grossenbaugh has been an exemplary leader, providing invaluable guidance, support, and inspiration to our team. His dedication to the safety and well-being of our community and his commitment to the professional development of his staff have been outstanding. To question his leadership with his strong history and long list of successes and bettering the department for the citizens of Hinkley, in my opinion, is a dereliction of your duties as trustees. Without his leadership, I find it increasingly difficult to align with the department's current trajectory and to continue performing my duties with the same level of commitment and enthusiasm. This decision was not made lightly, as I have thoroughly enjoyed the last 14 years working with and helping lead such an incredibly dedicated and hardworking team. However, I feel that it is in my best interest to step down at this time. I would like to formally thank Chief Grossenbaugh and the outstanding current and former men and women of Hinkley Fire Department for their opportunities, friends, memories, and experiences I have gained during my employment. I know that the men and women of Hinkley Fire will continue to thrive and serve the community with the same dedication and excellence that Chief Grossenbaugh has always championed. Sincerely, Lieutenant Andrew Baxter. The second letter. Hinkley trustees, I feel that I need to explain to you and the township why I'm leaving my position as the administrative assistant for the Hinkley Fire Department. Over the process of hiring full-time firefighters, I have come to worry about the leadership within the township and highly question your judgment. Through this process, you have repeatedly tried and sometimes successfully to cut the fire chief out of the process and also drag out the process, which cost us to lose some really good candidates for the position. To question the authority, integrity, and knowledge of the fire chief has been beyond my comprehension. I can count on one hand the number of times any of you have stopped by the station in the last year. How can you accurately know what the needs of the department are if you don't check in? It amazes me that you can simultaneously not manage all of us while also micromanaging us. During this time, you have begun to push Fire Chief Justin Grossenbaugh out the door. 27 years of loyal service to Hinkley is brushed off because he isn't the yes man that you want. He cares about the members of this department and wants to ensure that when a call comes in, that not only the person calling safe, but all the, also the members of the department. He has pushed for full-time firefighters because he knows that this is needed to sustain the department. He does things on fire scenes like cut down the fence because he knows how to run a fire scene properly and as safe as possible, all of which he has received nothing but pushback. Justin Grossenbaugh has done more for this community than all three of you put together. He has transformed our department from a minor league department to a well-run, well-trained department. His leadership in raising wages to a more acceptable level, increasing staffing to three members, upgrading old and outdated vehicles and equipment, increasing training within the department, and commitment to helping the Hinkley community will never be matched, not to mention all of the events that he has tires tirelessly done, including touch a truck, Santa parade, and monthly blood drives. I am unsure how you will ever find a fire chief that can hold a candle to Justin. If by chance you could find this unicorn, they will not stay long once they realize that they cannot run the department, how it needs to be run in order to have a successful fire department. When we passed our levies, we told voters that the money was going towards three-man staffing, full-time firefighters, and new vehicles. To continually push back on full-time members is obviously not what the residents of Hinkley desire, since they overwhelmingly voted for the levies. I love this job. I don't want to leave, but I cannot continue to work for a township that cares so little for the people that give the most. Jen Amburn.
Any extra comments?
Those aren't my comments.
I will, um.
Those are public records.
Thanks for your time.
I will send you the electronic version. I actually don't even have the electronic version of Andrew Baxter, so I don't know that you've seen that. That was handed to me. Um, so I will send that to you if you would like to have the other.
I just, um, want everyone in the room to know that our new chief is a fill-in chief, and that's Andrew, um, I'm sorry, not Andrew. That's Sean Barrett, and, um, he has taken it upon himself, knowing the situation, to do the best he can to serve Hinkley with the same quality and level of excellence that we have all come to know and love in our community. And I'm going to encourage him that if he has any issues with the leadership, he could let us know, because we support him.
Anyone else?
Oh, um, just a brief, a brief statement on the remarks for the executive session, and your explanation of the executive session. Uh, executive session is by law allowed to be held in private to discuss a ma- one of six matters. I'm sorry, Thomas Vanover, 1388 Ridge Road. Um, however, the records produced out of that executive session are not private. Um, so we would expect that all attendees to the executive session are provided as a public record, so that we know who, we know who voted here, but we don't know who was actually in the executive session. So, um, that is public record, not protected, and you can speak. And that's, uh, according to Dave Yost, Attorney General's Letter from 2020. Um, so many of you know who I am, many of you don't. Um, I am, uh, Thomas Vanover, as I said, and I am the managing partner of Binky Commons Landholding across the street. Um, and, uh, I'm not going to discuss the incident that's on social media that the part of the, uh, special meeting, because I believe there is, we filed a criminal complaint, and I'm expecting, though police chief's not here, neither is, uh, trustee Engelman. We expect that that investigation will be conducted with the integrity and diligence that it requires. But I am concerned. Um, I'm concerned over many issues, this being one of them. As a property owner and a landowner in Hinkley, I have standing to speak at this meeting, and the work that we've put into the property across the street over the past five years to save the most iconic structure in the city is imp- to save the most iconic structure in the city is in peril, and it is truly in peril. I believe that the resources of the township have been weaponized based on the most previous trustee election. You don't see me around town, I'm not here, I'm not, you know, I'm the quiet one behind all the business. This is the, this is stuff that we see under the current administration in DC. I truly never expected to come here, invest my life savings and thousands of hours to Hinckley, Ohio, to have my civil rights violated. We have received reports with, of course, the zoning incident or the incident with the zoning inspector across the street. There's recorded evidence of an attempt to rezone a portion of our property, to take away our rights, the same rights that other residential landowners have. There's also been testimony, and we've got testimony of communication, where a trustee has muscled, for lack of a better term, the fire chief to involve themselves or to be present for statutory fire inspections on our property, okay? And this shows a pattern of civil rights violations. It's contrary to the Fourth Amendment to the, of the Constitution, it's contrary to the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution. Your legal counsel can, you know, can explain whatever you need them to explain, understanding that the trustees do not have the same right of entry statutorily as the fire service does. So muscling their way into inspection is a violation of the Fourth Amendment for illegal search. Rezoning the property under state of Ohio zoning law to explicitly prevent us from doing what every other property owner of that type can is a taking of the land, contrary to law, and any use that's been established on that property prior to the rezoning is allowed to stand on that property, that's your zoning ordinance. There are multiple violations of your rules, of the township rules, that we are being, you know, that are being placed upon us arbitrarily, and I can only, there's evidence that it's only because of this catfight. I'm not part of that, okay? I am a business owner that spent a lot of money here and a lot of time here, and when we got here, the very first thing that we did was talk to the trustees and the zoning inspector, including Ray Shulte, including Tom Wilson, we walked them through, we showed them everything that existed, we asked what the town needs. We don't have big businesses in the building across the street, okay? These are all local business owners from either Hinckley directly or from one of the neighboring cities in Hinckley, okay? And we, when we got here, I want to let everybody know, we were offered, we had a Donato's pizza chain that came to us and said, we want to knock the building down and put a Donato's in here. They would have paid for the water line themselves, but that's not the vision, that's not what we wanted, that's not what we promised Ray we were going to do, and that's not what the township needed. So my point is that this pattern of weaponization and coming after us, because my business partner and his fiance, and she ran against the winning candidate in the election, that's DC stuff, there's no place for it here, and I just want to make sure that the residents know, somebody's paying for the stuff that's broken in Binky Commons due to these actions. Also, if we are forced to file a nineteen eighty-three federal civil rights lawsuit, it will be filed against the township and any official that is part of it, and your legal counsel can tell you, your qualified immunity does not protect you for civil rights violations, you will be personally liable in the suit. They say you can't fight City Hall, I have no desire to fight City Hall. I've spent twenty years in public service myself, and I did not expect to come here and be treated this way. I know elections have consequences. I didn't run for election, nor did my business, and I truly hope that smarter, more sophisticated, more educated heads prevail through legal counsel, through real conversation to recognize that targeting our business, the most iconic building in the township, over an election that's gone, we just can't tolerate it. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ken Vannick, I've been a Hinckley resident for over twelve years. I spent thirty-five years in public service, I was United States Coast Guard, and I'm a professional. I treat people with dignity, respect, I don't have any prepared comments to make here, I don't have anything scripted, it's coming straight from the heart. Jack, are you listening?
Absolutely, sir, I'm checking the time.
Checking time, okay.
Everybody's on time tonight.
That's perfectly fine. A story that I'd like to share with you first, how I officially became known with Jack, all right? I sent him an email and as well as the rest of the trustees about the drug mark, Fidago, on how the Hinckley Township is going to give up that opportunity to create jobs for Hinckley people and our students and our kids could go to work there, and all because you didn't want to give them a tax abatement, and now Brunswick is fighting us.
Are you talking to me?
I'm talking to all of us. Brunswick is falling, Brunswick is falling on us. I'm sorry?
I voted against that.
Okay, but still, we're still funding, we're still funding money to get this thing settled.
Put my name in there, I just wanted to clarify that.
Great, so Jack decided he was going to drive to my house and intimidate me, instead of speaking with me over the phone or sending me an email, follow up to Miami, because he didn't want to have record of it, okay? I officially sent them two weeks ago a request to publicly speak. I was never called back, I never received an email, and I was left in limbo. Thirty-five years of public service, I've never seen such a display of unprofessionalism in my life. I carried a gun for twenty-eight of those years as a regulator. How would it be on national television if it made CNN news where I blazed myself into somebody's homeboat, ship, cruise ship, and treated somebody with that type of respect, that lack of respect? Ripping signs, not even on the building, they were on a rail. I don't even know this gentleman, I don't even know it, but you know what, my family's had ties here since the early nineteen hundreds. My family home is now torn down and it's an empty lot next to the historical society. Never in my wildest imagination, I grew up here, sled riding here, fishing here, boating here, I was born probably before, when my mom, when I was in my mother's belly. I've never seen such a display of unprofessionalism in my life. For a small town, small town, big hearts, little hearts, I don't know, I mean, there's a lot of broken hearts in this room, I can tell you that much right now, because it hurt us all. I don't know if you guys vetted her, properly hired her, or whatever happened in this process. Did you do a background check? Did you call references? Did you check to see if, how, why she has such a sort of stint here, there, and everywhere? Elections do have consequences, and we can also have a recall. So that's how my position is, I've never seen such display of unprofessionalism in my life, tyrannical, authoritative, I've never seen it, and to say confiscated by the government? What constitution are we reading here? Unbelievable. I'm sure there's a reason why she's not here, we can all figure that out, okay? But all three of you are disgrace.
Good evening, my name is Christie Bowman, I live on Stony Hill Road, and mine has nothing to do with any of what's previously been said. I just had a question, and I know the serviceman left. Were the parts, is that for the mower to do the ditch mowing? Is it, okay, because I had called the middle of August and I didn't get a response, and then my husband called last week to see, I can't see to pull out of my driveway.
I don't know who he spoke to, the mower went down, and we ordered the parts, and the parts were on backorder, so that's what he talked about tonight.
Okay, I wasn't sure, so I just wanted to see.
We should hit them in a week, and then as soon as we get them installed.
Because it is very difficult, and I'm so afraid I'm going to pull out and hit something. So I live across from Canterbury Farm, the development. I live next to a house that, or next to property that actually is owned by someone on Waymouth, but they don't do anything with their, their ditch, and I know last year it had been mowed about three times, this year I've only seen them come down one.
Is it on the east side of Stony Hill that needs mowing, or the west?
For.
It's the east side.
It's the east side that needs done, yes.
The east side, right at Stony Hill and Waymouth, then.
Across from Canterbury Farms, but the gentleman that owns the property that's on Stony Hill actually butts up to Waymouth.
Okay, I'll see if I can get him out with some hand equipment and see if we can take care of that for you.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Penny Molner, and I'm sure for myself and probably many of these other people that are here, we're all wondering what your findings were with your executive meeting with the zoning lady? Is it still under investigation, what's going on with her?
Executive session, it was a personnel matter that we're not going to discuss in a public meeting. What we did there is a matter, like I said, of personnel and an HR item. We administer discipline in accordance with the township disciplinary policy.
So.
You can do a request for what was done, but we're not going to discuss it in an open meeting.
Okay, so she's still employed?
Yes.
So there was a vote on the decision?
Did you want to come up again?
So there was, I was left with the initial conversation with an expectation that you hadn't made a decision on that, but, and I believe that that's what you said, that there wasn't a decision made, but there, your recent statement was there was a decision made?
There, there were two special meetings.
Correct, the most recent one.
One?
Okay.
The most recent was yesterday.
All right, then go ahead and tell them.
So there was one on Friday, I believe, where we went over.
No, I think it was Tuesday, last week, Tuesday.
Whatever day it was, there was a previous one where we went over.
Okay.
Yesterday's, we had here, and when we came out of that meeting, we had a vote, public vote, so that was, that was a public meeting.
Just a little bit, because I can barely.
We had, I'm sorry, we had another meeting yesterday, there was an executive session, we came out and voted on disciplinary action.
In the meeting yesterday, you voted on disciplinary action?
Aaron Kling and Laurel Road. So I'm usually the quiet, comic relief guy, the sarcastic guy. I'm upset over this trustee deal, or I'm sorry, the zoning thing. I would not tolerate that from a neighbor, from one of my kids, anybody. I hope that disciplinary action is well thought out before our next term to vote. We're supposed to be rural, keep it rural. That would be a trustee that has a problem, that goes to the donut shop, walks in, gets a cup of coffee, and says, let's sit here on the stoop and discuss this, let's keep it rural, not, we're not a city, this is not Cleveland, this is not, you know, Maple Heights, we're a township. If we want to keep it rural, like everybody's sign said for the last four years, let's make the right decision on who we hire and how we discipline them if they do wrong. I have the utmost respect for you guys and your time that, for our township, our police force, our fire. I'm not the guy to bad rap anybody, ever. This is not good, it's not a good look for our township, period. Let's just make sure we make the right decisions on what we do, as a township, with everybody.
Thanks for comments. Anyone else? We will move to adjourn at seven sixteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.